Okay, we're ready?
Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May 23rd, 2022. The first item up is adjournments, item number one, 2020-88BZ, 315 Berry Street, Brooklyn. Item number two, 2020-2018, sorry, 188A and 2018-189A, 19428, 19432, Dutton Avenue, Queens.
Right, so this one is the third adjournment, so we're going to send in a dismissal warning. Okay, so counsel, please send a dismissal warning letter. We last heard this in February of '21, so it's been here too long. No, sorry, we heard, last heard it a year ago, May of '21. Yeah, sorry, but yeah.
Item number three, 86348BZ, 25916, Union Turnpike, Queens.
Right, so this one, we just have to adjourn because of the situation with the applicant representative and then hiring new counsel, so that's out of their control.
Yeah, we should change the applicant name once we have authorization.
Yes.
Item number four, 11101BZ, 9001, Dittmas Avenue, Brooklyn. Postponements. Item number five, 2016-4249BZ, 2420 Amsterdam Avenue, Manhattan.
Right, normally, we wouldn't allow so many postponements, but they're on the verge of getting their COs, so they don't need to be here if they can get it without us.
Okay, item number nineteen, 2019-96A through 2019-155A, am I supposed to announce it now?
Say it, wait a minute, I'm confused.
Uh, the GCL Cole Street or?
Oh, so you added that one, okay, fine, yeah, yeah, please, go ahead.
2019-96A through 2019-155A, Cole Street, Bluebird Loop, Lookout Lane, Staten Island. This application's being postponed. Withdrawals. Item number six, 1792BZ, 600612, Northern Boulevard, Queens.
So I'd like to make a motion to withdraw.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Chair, vice chair.
Aye.
No, Tony, Tony, you're, you're turning away from your speaker, it's not audible. Start over.
Sorry, I apologize. Uh, withdrawal applications.
No, no, Tony, Tony, no, 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 you need to be closer to this, to the speaker. I'm not sure what's going on, you're gonna need to turn what you read closer to the speaker.
1792BZ. Can you hear me?
Now we can, something just happened to your speaker, yeah.
That's weird, okay. 1792BZ, 600612, Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, a motion to withdraw.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Okay, application has been withdrawn. Give me one second to go back to the others.
Item number seven, 2020-55BZ, 1284 East 19th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, a motion to withdraw this.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been withdrawn. Decision items. Item number eight, 118080BZ, 6207 Woodside Avenue, Queens.
Um, revised statement of facts was submitted requesting elimination of the term of the grant based on the history of good maintenance and continuation of the use group 6B uses. I'm okay with that request. But all uses, as we discussed at the last hearing, must be limited to use group 6B, including the cellar, so that any storage in the cellar is accessory to the use group 6B and is not a warehouse use, which is not use group 6B. So, um, based on that condition, a motion, sorry, is that, motion to grant.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Item number nine, 40682BZ, 241186 Street, Brooklyn.
Hey, um, we had a problem with the previously approved plans where there was a stamp on it that obscured the drawing, and our staff was able to clear that up, so thank you for doing that. Since this is an extension of time, no new plans are supposed to be submitted, so it's good it be, could be cleared up on the computer. Photos show that the site looks very good. The submission says the container is there to store maintenance supplies. I don't understand why such supplies can't be stored inside the building. I, I don't really know what the buildings department's attitude is to these outdoor storage containers, but it's a two-year extension of time requested, and I didn't see any conditions other than the usual for, for these kinds of sites. So, um, motion to grant.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye, and I just wanna say that I'm taking the word for the fix of the cracks. The pictures are not that indicative, so I'm taking the word for it, thank you.
Okay, thank.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application is granted.
Item number ten, 88754BZ, 2028-01 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Um, a note was added as requested with respect to the signage analysis on corner lots to be determined by DOB. Motion to grant on the following conditions: to maintain the site free of debris and graffiti, and to replace fencing and landscaping as needed, and maintain the brick wall and walls of the accessory building and, uh, and walls of the accessory building, and that signage shall comply with the zoning regulations and DOB to determine science compliance as to corner lots. So, based on that, a motion to grant.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number eleven, 5-98BZ, 1861 McDonald Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hey, the request is, they submitted a formal request for a 20-year term. I'm okay with that, given the nature of the use. Um, so it's specific to this use. Um, I, I thought there was a very carefully worded review of commissioners' comments, and applicant's response to them was provided with, well, let's say, and the statement of facts was made to reflect the revisions to the drawings. I have to say, I very much appreciate the care and respect reflected in this letter. Respect is such a rare phenomenon these days, and when it's given, I, I get, I get teary-eyed about it, so thank you very much to Mr. Ross for that letter. So I'd like to make a motion to grant on the condition, no barbed or razor wire, no lighting to shed on residential neighbors' property. Motion to grant on that.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number twelve, 4209BZ, 441-467 Prospect Avenue, Brooklyn.
This is second, sorry, scrolling. Um, the applicant provided the location of the sound sensor on the roof, thank you, and a copy, they also provided a copy of the previously approved memorandum, which had been incorporated into the last resolution, and so should be included in this resolution and as part of the conditions. And I want to add to the condition in the motion to grant that if neighbors complain about noise, because there was one letter from one neighbor, then the applicant should work with that neighbor to reduce the intrusion and reduce the impact. And so based on that, a motion to grant.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Item number thirteen, 14814BZ, 11 Avenue A, Manhattan.
Um, they requested four years of an extension. They were supposed to correct the statement of facts to request the correct waiver. Uh, they did a hasty job, and hence it was inaccurate, but there's at least a mention of the right, right waiver section, so for our own counsel's benefit, because they might get confused by that when they're writing the resolution, um, the waiver is pursuant to 1-07.3C2, not C3. The grant was on December 15th, 2015. The time to complete construction expired on December 15th, 2019. The application was filed on November 12th, '21, which is just under two years after the expiration date, and hence it's 107.3C2, okay? But other than that, motion to grant.
Chair, promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application has been granted. SOC calendar's continued hearing items. Item number fourteen, 17197BZ, 6501 Casino Boulevard, Queens.
Um, as is usual for this applicant, and for which I am always very grateful, the submission is properly responsive to our comments. So again, thank you to this applicant, who is so respectful in their submissions. As to the subject of the trash storage on the street and applicant's outreach to its carting company, the trash compactor question, which is really what I was talking about, really is a citywide policy issue, I really wish the city would get involved in this conversation. You know, if the state Department of Transportation would get involved in this conversation. Trash stored on the street has become a nuisance everywhere, both for its aesthetic affront and its attraction to vermin, most notably rats, which we're now seeing on a daily basis scurrying around on all sidewalks, no matter which, which economic zone you live in or walk in. Um, I don't expect this applicant to solve that problem on its own, but I would just say that there must be a small compactor that retains liquids and prevents them from drooling down on the sidewalk and only making this already obnoxious situation even worse. So my suggestion actually, in the prior hearing, hadn't been to install a compactor on the street. It was to install a compactor in the restaurant and for the restaurant operator to bring out the compacted and better enclosed waste, because compacters have these great bags that really seal, so better enclosed waste to the containers on the sidewalk, which arguably would reduce the amount of waste stored on the street between pickups and reduce the trash enclosure area, which is very large. Um, I'm not aware of serious trash issues in front of restaurants in high-income neighborhoods, so I'm curious about how they're handling it, but I just want to recommend to the, uh, the operator to please look into this, because it really is a very large enclosure. The other issue is that the enclosure area that's shown on the plan is measuring six feet from building to chain link fence, allows an at least three-foot wide access area to the front of each dumpster, hence imposing on the pedestrian route and encouraging piling up of trash bags between the front, the fence and the dumpster. The site plan also shows only two dumpsters of unknown dimensions, while the photo shows three, so actually, they have three dumpsters there most of the time. I observed recently some very attractive, fully enclosed containers for store, for outside storage that apparently are successful in preventing entry by vermin. I actually spoke to the superintendent, who was unloading, who was loading the trash from those things, and he said he has no rat problems with those enclosed containers, they're really, they snap shut tight. Um, I again asked the applicant to look into using these instead of a standard dumpster, given the location on the sidewalk and its imposition on the neighborhood. We had discussed at the last hearing eliminating one of the parking spots, um, but the site plan still shows two, I'm not sure how that was resolved. We had talked about correcting the use labels on the plans. Um, did that turn out to be unnecessary, or was it done? I, I didn't find bubbles on the designations. Um, and can we clarify then, is it use group six at the cellar and first floor, and use group nine trade school at the second floor? Because the zoning calc's show that most of the uses are community facility, so according to these, the use waiver is being reduced to only 2,264 square feet on the first floor and an unknown quantity in the center cellar. So really, applicant needs to clarify if that is the goal. Um, show the use groups on the plans, because at the moment, it seems like it's only a small amount of use group six, and you're effectively giving up the non-conforming, if you want to call it that, non-conforming status of the other portion of the building. As a reminder, this was a variance also to allow, to allow for the enlargement of a non-conforming use, which apparently created non-compliant conditions that to, as to lot coverage and yards. So even if they switch to an entirely conforming use, they'd still need to maintain the variance because of the non-compliant condition. Um, those are my comments. Um, oh, and I'd like them to please correct the revision date on the proposed plan set, it still says October 21. Okay, um, Vice Chair Shonda?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I think the reason, my main concern is the, the amount of area that has been, um, chained, um, that has been enclosed, um, and that takes away part of the sidewalk, um, to store, um, the trash enclosure. And I think that is because not only there are these two dumpsters, or three, as the photo shows, um, but it's also to give them the ability to access from the front to the back, because they're stacked in a one behind the other kind of situation.
Um, no, no, they're not one behind their other, they're next to, next to, next to, but there is a walking path in front of them.
Right, the reason I'm saying behind, it's because in order to access to the one that's all the way in the back, you have to go, go along the side, and that's why the encroachment onto the sidewalk, to access the one that's all the way in the back. Um, so if that is the reason, I would suggest the applicant maybe orient the opening of the, the fence towards the street side. And we saw a really good example, the one that we reviewed, the case that we reviewed last week, the Pigeon Meadows Road. It has a sliding door type of a thing, so you can almost use that as a way to access all the garbage containers from the sidewalk without having to encroach onto the sidewalk. Um, and, and for me, that is the biggest concern, is the fact that the, the, the trash enclosure is encroaching onto the city sidewalk. Um, and if that can be contained within the property line in a manner that can address their need to contain the three trash dumpsters behind an enclosure. Um, that's really where, um, that's my recommendation. Uh, I would like to hear from them as to whether that's possible or not. Uh, with regards to the parking spaces, the applicant, um, is continuing to maintain, as you said, the, the existing number of parking spaces. My main concern, um, is with the two parking spaces that is, um, fronting Casino Boulevard, because it is so difficult to separate out what is part of the city sidewalk and what is part of the property. Maybe the applicant should demarcate the two parking areas in front of the building, because it's on their property, so they can, like, yellow, mark it with a yellow color, or say, pa, a parking, uh, and put a sticker saying parking space, so that pedestrian is aware that that is not, um, part of the city sidewalk, and it is somewhat, uh, eh, for, it would have vehicular movements. This is to ensure pedestrian safety and separation of the pedestrian and the vehicles.
Okay. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no additional comments.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Thank you, Chair, I second the comments by you and by Vice Chair. I like the idea that they might be able to, uh, like, narrow the, um, the width, the six-feet width of the trash enclosure, and instead of making the gate all the way, um, at the end, they can make a sliding gate, that's, that's a good idea, if you make a sliding gate and reduce the, the width from six feet to three feet, and I did look at the street view on Google, and I believe three feet would slightly fit the, um, include that, like, that storage unit, the dumpster. I believe that would, like, help them to resolve the issue of encroaching on the sidewalk. Other than that, I have no comment, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Shabetta?
Uh, thank you, Chair, I have no further comments on this.
Okay.
Okay, you want? Okay. New cases, item number fifteen, 19708BZ, 341 Troy Avenue, Brooklyn.
Hey, there are no notice requirements for extensions of time. There is a clear explanation of the reasons for the delay and a timeline for construction. Requested extension is four years. Photo showed debris on the site. If construction is not to begin for approximately seven months, the site needs to be cleared of debris. Those are my only comments, um, hold on a second, uh. Yeah, okay, I'm just getting. Okay, um, Vice Chair Shonda?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to know if the drawings are, are ready for filing at DOB. Otherwise, I have no additional comments, I'm satisfied.
I think they said no. But anyway.
No, it wasn't quite clear, they're saying that ready to, uh, they're ready to proceed, and so I'm assuming the drawings are ready, it's just a matter of submitting it, or is it like hiding an architect and starting the drawings?
Okay. Commissioner Otley Brown?
Um, I have no comments other than to keep the site clean until they are ready to construct.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ashetta?
Thank you, Chair, nothing further from me.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Thank you, Chair, nothing further from me.
Okay.
Okay, item number sixteen, 5513BZ, one sixteen ninety, sixteen ninety sixtieth Street, Brooklyn.
There are no notice requirements for extensions of time. It seems like the reason for the lack of progress on this application is funding attributed in part to COVID. Um, the applicant should verify if this is a correct assumption. Um, the request is for a four-year extension with the timeline provided. Um, I don't really have any comments, just gotta answer that question. Um, Vice Chair Shonda?
I have no comment, comments on this, I'm satisfied, thank you.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Ashetta?
I have no comments, Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Thank you, Chair, I'm satisfied with this application, I have no comments.
Appeals calendar continued hearing items, item number seventeen, 170938, 220 Industrial Loop, Staten Island.
We were waiting for fire department and DEP sign-offs, which I don't think we have yet, correct? Right. The applicant argues that it shouldn't have to file a site connections proposal to DEP. That's entirely a DEP call, we don't, we listen to what they want to see. Applicant also didn't respond to DEP's comment that the proposed enlargement is too close to the storm sewer easement. They need to respond to that. Uh, might note that easements should be large enough to account for a distance, otherwise, there should be an easement of the easement, but anyway, that's for applicant and DEP to work out. A submission was made in response to fire department's comment about fire hydrant testing, so we need the fire department to, um, respond to that submission. And at the last hearing, I asked that a builder's pavement plan, or like a pseudo B, builder's pavement plan, since they're not technically that, be submitted, and it wasn't. Um, please clarify whether the proposed enlargement triggers the requirement to provide new sidewalks or road bed improvement. Um, photo shows sidewalk in place, sidewalks in place. So a BPP, if this were a map street, um, wouldn't be required if the, um, if it's already improved, I guess, um, unless there's something, some kind of construction that goes on that triggers it, and I don't know what the threshold is that triggers it. I tried to figure it out from looking it up on DOT regulations, but I couldn't figure it out. Um, so those are my comments, and I just, um, hold on one second. I see one person with their hand up in the waiting room. This is a review session, so only speakers, I mean, only commissioners and BSA staff are permitted to speak during this time. Look at that split screen, it works, okay? Um, only staff and commissioners are permitted to speak at this time. At the end of the review session, we'll go to the public hearing, where the applicant's representatives will present their project, and then the general public will be invited to speak on that given application, so please put your hand down now, um, and we'll let you know when it's time for the public hearing. Okay, so now I go on to comments from, um, Vice Chair Shonda.
Um, I'm satisfied with the revised submission. Um, I didn't see a FDNY sign-off, and, um, also wanted to clarify if the applicant has responded to all of DOB comments uh, other than the site connection protection.
Um, sorry, DEP comments, not DOB comments, right?
I'm sorry, uh, thank you, thank you for that, uh, DEP, DEP, uh, comments, uh, other than the site connection, uh, protection plan.
It was, um, just, just to mention, there was an email from the project manager at DEP on May 19th, which I forwarded to the applicant.
Okay.
Just about the connection proposals also, there was an updated email.
May 19th, other words?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should be in the comments.
In other words, it's not a sign-off, right?
No.
Comments, okay, no.
Okay, thank you.
Um, sorry to interrupt you, madam.
Uh, I guess we don't have it in our file, right? So we don't know what additional comments DEP is requiring.
But I think I'm pretty sure I uploaded it, I'll upload it again.
Yeah, it is, if you, it's there, it's just if you didn't review the case until after, if you reviewed the case before May 19th, you wouldn't have seen it, so.
Yeah, I think that's probably what happened.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Um. Anything else?
No, I was just curious about this whole, um, DEP and DOB's policy regarding SCP, and, um, I was trying to understand, DOB seems, doesn't require it, uh, because it's an enlargement without a change to the lot area, but DEP seems to want it, so I was just, for my more academic understanding, I was trying to understand who makes the call and who then administratively reviews it and gives the permit.
Don't know. There, those are the agencies, that's amongst those agencies, we defer to those agencies' requests for those things.
Right.
Because we are, don't have any expertise in the subject. Yeah, um, let me just go through the, uh, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no comments.
Commissioner Ashetta?
Thank you, Chair, just to clarify, it's, um, it's not the way the Chair, the Vice Chair mentioned it, it's the opposite. The applicant is claiming that DOB does not require, uh, DOB does not require the SCP to be, uh, resubmitted if, if there is no change in the lot size. And the position of DEP is to submit a site connection plan. What the, what the applicant is claiming is that the What the what the applicant is claiming is that the, according to the policy from the DOB, if there is no change in the si- in lot size, there is no need to resubmit the SCP. I, this is actually, again, is what I like generally know. Uh, side connection plan, which is directly related to the amount of drainage from the site, is dependent on two things. Number one, the size. Number two, the type of use. In other words, how how much uh like impermeable surface inside you have and and so on. So I I believe at the end of the day, DEB will will make him submit one. But other than that, I I have no other comments. If if he can submit to us like a printed version or a version of that policy at the D- DOB, I would appreciate it. I would like to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Shaveta?
I have no further comments, although I am curious to 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 see what uh if we could conference with the sister agencies, it'd be interesting to see what what the issue is with the site, with the site connection plan.
Uh, now we're digging into their management of their stuff. We have enough to do with the BSA. You want to manage how DOB and DEP work together? Seriously?
I I'm just trying to find a way to get the the applicant to come to the speediest resolution that uh with safety in mind. Um, and if that means speaking to sister agencies, I think that couldn't hurt us. At least so we have a better understanding as to why. But um I understand the position of the board.
Okay. All right, move on, please. Item number eighteen, twenty eighteen seventy-eight through twenty eighteen eighty-six A, twenty eighteen eighty-nine A through um twenty eighteen eighty-nine A, twenty eighteen ninety-eight. This is Santina Drive, Staten Island. Okay, this one came back to us. Uh, we had to reopen it in February because it's a very, very complicated approval. And it required or um drawings with easements indicated many different kinds of overlapping easements with fire department restrictions, a fire department restrictive declaration, um our own resolution that had to match it, the drawings that had to match all of those other things. And as counsel was writing the resolution, it realized there was a mismatch. So over these last few months, this very, very cooperative applicant um has been working with fire department and and us to coordinate all of those things. And and now we have a really great coordinated, clear set. And the reason for this is not idle bureaucratic pursuit. It's because in ten years from now, people are going to be coming to that site and wondering, what are we supposed to do here? And if it's badly um recorded, badly articulated, badly written, et cetera, and contrast in internally contradictory, they won't know what to do here. So that's why we're doing it. I really want to um thank Mr. Sana for working with us so closely. And of course, the fire department for working so diligently on this. So um, this is uh, we're, I guess we have, let's see, what did we do? We didn't, so, right, when we go to the hearing, I want to be able to close this. And given the situation that uh it was really opened only to correct documents that we'd already looked at, vote so that it's not dragged out anymore. Okay? So this is a really unusual condition. And our counsel has been preparing a resolution poised for this, which is one reason we don't do closed votes anymore, because the resolutions were taking too long to produce. Um, so so there had to be a time lag between closing and voting, but here it's not necessary. Okay? So again, thank you so much to Mr. Sana and Fire Department for working on this. Um, I don't know if any other commissioners have have comments, because this has been going on kind of between counsel, Tony, and applicant. Okay, thanks. Okay, this concludes the public review session for March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Okay, so does anybody need a ten-minute break, or should we jump right in? Okay, so let's jump right in to the hearing. And now this is where we're going to go for the information of the person who wanted to speak on one of the cases. Um, we will be now going to the public hearing, one at a time. We're going to have testimony from applicant's representative, and then um and then we'll go to the public. Okay? Go ahead, Tom. Okay, this is the public hearing for May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. The first case up is SOC calendar, continued hearing items, item number fourteen, one seventy-one, sorry, one seventy-one ninety-seven BZ, sixty-five oh one, Cassina Boulevard, Queens. Yeah, it's Sandy. Isn't this Sandy? This is would be Sandy. Yeah. Anostu. Yeah, so please raise your your Zoom hand if this is your case so that we can, and join us panelists, please. I just want to make sure I'm always letting the right person in, otherwise. Um, yeah, it's Sandy.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Okay, let me, uh, you can join us panelists?
Yes.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to, hold on a second, sorry. Um, do you affirm to address the board's questions? Could you hold on one second? I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Um, Chase, can you swear in? I forgot my swearing sheet. Uh huh.
I'm sorry.
That's.
Okay, you may want to admit um the property owner, Mr. Rocco Sacco.
And so is it possible that he's calling in on a phone number, last three digits, seven nine seven? Um. If the, if Mr. Sacco, if that's your phone number, you can raise your Zoom hand with star nine on your telephone.
Sorry, guys.
To- Tony, just a second. Dial star nine, Mr. Sacco. If this is your, that's your phone number.
No, that's not his number.
Okay, so he hasn't called in.
Forty-five fifty-two, this is, okay.
Just wanted to say, Andy? Yeah, I guess so, because we don't see her calling. Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
So I listened to the review session comments, and um we appreciate the recommendation to install a small compactor within the restaurant so as to reduce the amount of refuse being stored on the sidewalk. So we will definitely look into that um as well as adjusting the width of the enclosure area so as not to impact the pedestrian path on the sidewalk. And we we can look at maybe switching the gate to a sliding gate. And also, as the board, the Vice Chair mentioned, uh, we will take a look at Pigeon Meadows Road um to see what was done there. And Madam Chair also mentioned something about another project we should look into.
Yeah, actually, it was, you know what? It's something that I walk by every day. I'm going to take a photograph of it, and I can forward that to um our project manager. This one is Vinroy.
Jella.
Sorry, Jella. I'll forward it to Jella, and then you can see what it is. The the one that I'm looking at is pretty small, but I'm sure that he, the superintendent said they make them all size. So the superintendent of the building became sort of my expert on the subject of trash.
Okay, so so we'll look into that, because we don't want rats in the neighborhood either. And we want to do what we can on our part to, you know, contain this problem within our property. Um, then the other comment that was raised regarding the one, well, currently two parking spaces. I think the discussion was to eliminate one, so we will revise our plan to show that. Because it's not always used. The two spaces are not used. So I think what the property owner had said was to just reduce it and have one in case sometimes it's used and he'd like to maintain that.
Okay.
And as far as the uses, I believe the only change that we were um proposing was to add a use group six on the second floor to just have that option. Uh, have the ma- retain the use group nine trade school, but add the use group six um as an option in case they're not able to find a use group nine tenant, which that's ultimately what their their goal is. Um.
Okay, so could you, so on the one hand, you have this daycare program, which is neither six nor, well, I guess it could be six. It's never really clear to me when days uh daycare be our schools and when their commercial operations, because I've actually worked on cases where DOB didn't accept it as a school. So so obviously, you 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 need to indicate, I mean, I think the safest is indicate on the drawings the range where you want to have use group nine and the range where you want to have use group six. Like maybe you hatch it. Like this is the use group six area, this is the use group nine area, or maybe the whole thing is either nine or six. But we need to limit it to sort of office use, because nine is an expansive, you could have a banquet facility on the second floor according to that, right? So it's gotta be.
Trade.
Great. Yeah, so a trade school is a fact, I don't know really why trade schools are characterized as nine. Maybe in the old days, they were like machine training or something like that. And and now it's, or now it's more like learning a language or something. Or um, or maybe it's cooking, and maybe that's why they think of it as, you know, something kind of heavy duty. But so if we limited, if we allow for trade school, it would be limited to trade school. Use group nine trade school only.
Right.
Or use group six. So just make it really clear, because right now, if you went with those drawings to DOB, they'd be like, wait a minute, you have a community facility in most of your buildings, so what do you need this variance for? Right?
Okay.
So just clarify what it is you're going after, so it's super clear on the drawings, even if the current occupancy is daycare. I mean, you could actually just write the word classroom, 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 eliminate the word daycare, because I think that's throwing you into a difficult place, right? Classroom, classroom, office, office, like that. And then characterize it as trade school or use group six, be professional offices. And those, and use group six on the first floor. Is that okay?
Yes, we'll we'll revise the plans to show that and and clarify in the statement.
Okay, and then back to the parking. I think it's a good idea to designate where the where the property line is. Actually, even insurance laws require you designate the property line with something so that if somebody falls on your property, somebody, I don't know what exactly it is, but I noticed that like in big office buildings that have public plazas, there's a little band in metal on the sidewalk that indicates you crossing over into private property there. So you should have something like that too to alert people that it's a drive route or something.
Okay.
Okay, um, good, okay. Any anything else in this? I think we could do this with, um, well, let's go to the public, see if there's any public comments. The screen? Yeah. So the case we are currently discussing is one seventy-one ninety-seven BZ, sixty-five oh one, Cassina Boulevard, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, please dial in six four six five five eight eight six five six. You will ask to enter the webinar ID number nine nine two three two seven three five four one five, press pound. You will then ask, you'll be um asked to per the participant ID, which you can ignore and just press pound. Once you're in the Zoom room, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute to be able to speak. If you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand. We are only discussing one seventy-one ninety-seven BZ, sixty-five oh one, Cassina Boulevard, Queens. Okay, so let me just go back to this. Okay, so there's one person, as I mentioned before, in the Zoom room with a last three-digit seven nine seven. If they'd like to speak on this case, you raise your Zoom hand with star nine on your telephone. Okay, so I think um the these kinds of things can just be made on the drawings. We don't need to keep the hearing open unless there is comments that we didn't know about. Um, so uh, please indicate on your drawings the, to the extent you've investigated on the trash compactor that you'll install a trash compactor in the restaurant, and that you'll reduce the um the depth of the enclosure thing. And um, and in your letter, just indicate you're going to look into other types of enclosures that may be more vermin-proof, because I know it's going to take a long time to find out what they are, if they're affordable. These things might be a fortune that I saw, so I don't know.
Yeah, they're expensive.
Yeah, so I mean, really, the dumpster world needs to get into a better product line, because those things are really made for construction sites, not for, not for everyday use. But, okay, um, let's see what else. Um, all right, so I just want to make sure that your designation on your drawing is as general as possible, restricted to professional offices and trade school only on the second floor. And um, and uh, and use group six, so you know, any kind of retail on the first floor and in the cellar. Okay, make sure you include the cellar, otherwise that would be a problem, that your cellar has to be conforming use, right?
Understand.
Okay, all right, anything else from anybody? Okay, so then I'd like to make, I don't see anybody calling in, so I'd like to make a motion to, oh, how much time do you need to do this?
Two weeks.
Okay. Sorry. Just one second. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Shaveta?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Commissioner Shaveta, could you repeat? Yeah, yours was very fuzzy, Commissioner. Now, do it again.
Hold on.
Oh, now I hear you clearer. Okay, thank you, sir. And again, um, Ms. Anagnostu, thank you so much for the the nature of your submissions, the responsiveness, and the, let's say, the, I don't know how to say this, the 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 Elon, the 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 feeling behind your submissions. I really, really do appreciate them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the whole board's um patience with this case and all our cases. Thank you, and your input.
Thank you, who cares? All right, um, somebody, oh, I see, that's Jay, uh, that's uh. Yeah, the next cases. Yeah, new cases, item number fifteen, nine, one ninety-seven oh eight BZ, three forty-one Troy Avenue, Brooklyn. This is for Jay Goldstein. Yeah, I let him in. There we go.
Hi, good morning, everybody.
You by yourself, Jay?
Yep.
Okay, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Say your name for the record and go.
Good morning, Jay Goldstein for the applicants. We attended the review session. Um, we will clean up the site and have photographs submitted to the board. And the plans, from my understanding, the mechanical is almost finished, and we're ready to go. And we will be ready to go.
Oh, okay, mech- even mechanicals are finished, okay.
Nowadays, they require full sets of plans anyways, so.
Even electrical?
I don't know.
No, they didn't use to ask electrical, I, they probably.
I know nowadays, when they, when we try and get a DOB objection for BSA, we always get pushback that you need full plans, including mechanical, including foundations. I don't know if, you know, I I can't speak to it.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure electrical isn't needed, because I don't know that BS, that DOB has electrical engineers to review it. That would be major. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, let's see if there's any comments from, um, from public. So the case we are currently discussing is one ninety-seven oh eight BZ, three forty-one Troy Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to discuss, it is six four six five five eight eight six five six, enter webinar ID number nine nine two three two seven three five four one five, pound. Enter webinar ID number nine nine two three two seven three five four one five pound. You'll then enter pound again, press star nine when you're in the Zoom room, press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute to speak. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand. We are only discussing one ninety seven oh eight BZ, three forty one Troy Avenue, Brooklyn. Um, how much time to submit the photos and?
I'll have someone out there this week to take care of it.
Okay, so two weeks?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, so then nobody's called in, so.
You know, Madam Chair, if I met, there's a hearing on, I think, June sixth.
Yeah.
Get this done this week for a decision on June sixth, if possible.
Yeah, so what I did with the last hearing is I let the project managers know that if we could get it within. I think we said like the equivalent of, so there's a holiday weekend here, right? So holiday time in here. So if we could get it in by the equivalent of Wednesday, I think, then I could put it on for that next hearing. So that. What, sorry?
June first?
Yes, because it always takes time to process and for us to mount it into our hearing schedule and for commissioners to see it. So if you could submit by Wednesday, that would be the case also with the prior hearing. So what I do is I look to see whether we can do it. And then we put it on because I know then otherwise you have to wait till July for the next hearing.
Right. I'll get it done this week, though.
One week and on the other case, maybe also one week. I don't know, we'll ask her. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm writing June sixth. So what we do is, just so you know, is the project managers have to confirm to me by that date. By Wednesday, close the business, that they receive the submission. Otherwise, we can't issue the calendar. Okay?
I got it.
All right then, so then I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And um before you go, uh, so it's for you not to feel left out by my comments in the previous. You also fall into the extraordinary class of most respectful applicant. I really, really appreciate it. You have no idea. Um, and again, thank you for all of this time of your great um co- consideration. Of and respect for the board.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next item, item number sixteen fifty five thirteen BZ sixteen ninety sixtieth Street, Brooklyn. Okay, Mr. Goldstein, yeah, do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, another matter to your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
You state your name for the record and proceed.
Jay Goldstein for the applicant. Uh, we attended the review session. We thanked the board very much. Um, Madam Chair, you're correct. The the reason for the delay was in part the economy when this was approved and in part COVID. So just fundraising, this project actually was filed with DOB to try and get permits. Um, and DOB said since the expiration was so near, they wanted us to file this with BSA to get the extension before proceeding. So we're a little further ahead than than the previous case, but we're ready to go.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Um, all right, uh, let's go to the public. So the case we are currently discussing is fifty five thirteen BZ sixteen ninety sixtieth Street, Brooklyn. If you wish to discuss, dial six four six five five eight eight six five six. You will ask to enter the webinar ID number, which is nine nine two three two seven three five four one five and press pound. You will press pound at the next prompt. Once you're in the Zoom room, press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute to speak. If you are in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand. And the case that we're currently discussing is fifty five thirteen BZ sixteen ninety sixtieth Street, Brooklyn. This is the only case we're currently discussing at this moment. Okay. Let's see, anybody called in, nothing to submit either on this one. So this one we could definitely put on for June sixth, right?
Okay, great.
Um.
Motion to close.
We're trying to, I'm trying to use up time, Tony.
Sorry, sorry.
Call in, right? All right. Really, really, really. So, okay, motion to close and thank you. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you very much, everybody. Have a good day.
You too. Okay, appeals calendar, continued hearing items. Item number seventeen, one seventy ninety three A, two twenty Industrial Loop Staten Island. Allowing Mr. Dale.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, you're a little wobbly with your.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, you're wobbly on my side, too. I I don't know how to fix it. Okay, well, we can hear you, but okay. Um, Todd, Todd, this is an AK, so you don't need to be sworn in.
So noted. Good morning, everyone.
Thank you.
So I did listen to the review session um and will speak to uh. The issues were raised there. I'll start with hopefully some of the simpler items with respect to the fire department. Chair, as you noted, there was a question regarding the hydrant test. We had submitted, I believe, May sixteenth was the date of an updated hydrant test uh that was uh citing city code. Um, per the request of the fire department, they just received that May sixteenth, so they're probably still in the process of review. I don't know if um. Chief Daly wants to speak to that, but it, May sixteenth was the most recent updated hydrant test, but we believe that'll address the fire department's concerns. With respect to the issue about the builder's pavement plan, uh, Chair, I apologize. I just realized in the cover letter that we didn't uh put something in there regarding the BPP. As you note, that this is a private road, so BPP wouldn't be required. But theoretically, if it were a new site, the project engineer said because of the nature of this enlargement. Um, a a BPP should not be triggered for the site. Um, but with respect to any concerns about the sidewalk or the curb cut, we did submit some street photos showing you that. Since the prior approval, when this was before the board, that the sidewalks are in place, there's no proposed change to the curb cuts. And um, there's no cracks in the sidewalk. There's actually some bollards in certain places and areas for pedestrian protection, even though. Not a lot of pedestrian uh activity on Industrial Loop, but we just wanted to provide those photographs to show you what the current sidewalk condition was.
Okay, so just to to go back on this, just curiosity, because I actually can't figure out how to find what triggers it. So if this were a map street, your engineer is saying the size of the enlargement would not trigger a BPP?
As I recall, yes, I don't have the specific figures in front of me or any code section, but because because of the nature of this enlargement, which I think is. It's approximately four thousand square feet, um, because it's an existing site and because no new curb cuts are required. But um, you know, I don't, I don't have any specific code citations that I can set forth right now.
The Madam Chair just emailed you something on this. Okay, thanks.
And finally, with respect to the DEP. Um, you know, first, I just want to say, I'd like to, you know, acknowledge the help that Ms. Matias has given. And helping to uh assist with communication between our office and DEP on this particular case. Um, just to summarize the concerns, I believe the current outstanding concerns of DEP were. There was a request for a site connection proposal. There were comments regarding the easement that's shown on the survey. And there was also a request for records of the existing approvals. I would say that we had previously submitted to the record uh documentation regarding existing approvals. And I think those were reforwarded to DEP. Uh, with respect to the easement. I I don't know how to further communicate this to DEP, but we're proposing no construction within this particular easement. So it it's really moot. Um, I'm I'm not sure what the concerns are when there's an easement that's indicated. And there's nothing proposed to interfere uh with that particular easement. But above and beyond that, we had submitted to the record the available um information regarding that easement. That it was originally um uh inst- it originally started when. There was grading of the original Industrial Loop site way back thirty, forty years ago, when they were doing grading, there was concerns about. Um, uh, the the runoff and they wanted to have an easement set up when they were doing the original grading. We provided the available paperwork that we had regarding that, and it's actually a DEP letter. So um, we gave DEP their agency's own letter regarding this easement to give them the idea of what it was originally there for. So I would say, um, you know, I would just interject here and say that, you know, you you know, our office does a lot of applications on Industrial Loop. And we've worked with DEP and many GCL thirty six applications. This one has been atypical and a little frustrating. I don't know how we can communicate to DEP that if we're not interfering with an easement, that there's any issues with this easement. But if there's anything we can do, we'll, we'll put that information forward. But I I I frankly am a little bit of a loss at this particular issue, at that particular item. With respect to the, sorry.
Let me just, before we move away from that, the first thing I want to say is we just got a sign off from fire departments. Thank you very much, Chief Daly. Who said they have no objections to the premises they reviewed the hydrant, so thank you for that. Um, with respect to DEP's story, um, and as I mentioned earlier, I'm always confused about easements. Where you create an easement, but you need an easement adjacent to the easement. So that's problematic in terms of how you make an easement. If they need to be wider, it should be wider. They're saying you're too close to the easement area. They're not saying you're, you're in the easement, but you're too close to the easement area. So if there is something in the easement that indicates what that means to have an easement. Like you can't be more than closer than X feet from the easement area, that would be the terms of the easement, right? Which is a bizarre kind of an easement, but nonetheless, I could say that. So you really do need to look at the document. But um, I think what we could do to to and um, to speed this up. Is we could probably close this and have the DEP issue um something that's discussed with, on the phone with our. Um, and with Tracy and and a DEP rep and your engineer. Um, to to figure out what needs to be done. Um, I don't know about with the uh site connection, though. That's something that often they require us to get before sign off. However, other times they are willing to accept a conditional approval. Um, sort of depends on what the process is and how concerned they are that you're not getting. You're not providing for adequate drainage on the site or whatever, right?
I understand. We're happy to make ourselves available because with respect, I would just say unfortunately, we didn't have time to get the letter into the record. But we had, the project engineer actually wrote a lecker, uh, excuse me, a letter with respect to concerns that were raised by DEP regarding SCP. And um, in the letter, we'll submit this to the record, but I can just briefly state on the record. What what the project engineer said is that the drywells, with respect to the drywall question, that it's based on the lot area. And the lot area is not changing and that the sanitary connection is based on the zoning district and the lot area, and that's not changing. And they said for this application that an SCP would not be required. Um, so they're a little confused on their end why it's being raised by DEP. And I think also one of the things that's happening with DEP is that, you know, I I don't know the ins and outs of DEP. But the division that the project engineers work with was back to SCPs is different than the division that's reviewing these GCL thirty six applications. And often, you know, as I said, you know, our office does a number of these applications. And often we have the engineers saying, DEP tells us we don't need this or or we shouldn't do this. And then we have a different division of DEP saying, give us this information. So we're also trying to broker communication between two parts of DEP. So if there is any discussion or sort of a, you know, going to what Commissioner Shabeta raised, I think, you know, maybe uh. If it works, I don't want to add extra work, but if there was like a little reset, maybe even a checklist that DEP could give us for these applications. To make it a little bit easier. So we have the practical unit that's reviewing SCPs and the unit that's reviewing these GCL thirty sixes. And maybe getting a little clarity on information they want, because we're trying to give the information. Um, and I think this particular case is maybe, you know, as I said, atypical and exact. Exacerbating some of the issues there because this is an enlargement, it's not a brand new development, so.
Right.
Just in short, we're willing to provide what we can, but in this particular case, we're running into some confusion and some difficulties. But we'll continue to try and do it.
My comment to Commissioner Shabeta was, I don't want to get the BSA involved in interagent, other interagency relations, right?
Right.
We have enough to, we have enough to worry about, but when we, when we are waiting for something from an agency, that's different. Then we reach out directly to them. We're aware that DEP is absolutely swamped and beyond below short-staffed. So whatever their priority situation is, you know, our cases, depending on what they are, don't necessarily fall within the review priority. That's another issue, but um, our our directory interaction with the agency is another thing. Because we have close relations with those people in the agencies. But between other agencies, that has to be worked out amongst themselves. They also have enough to worry about, right? Than us meddling in their operations, right?
So.
Yeah, okay, so, and you know, each has their reasons for asking. And until they coordinate whether they have, whose reasons are the right reasons, you know, this is like getting, this is like getting involved in your parents' fights. You know, go to the basement and watch TV is the right solution.
Fair enough. So we'll, we'll, we, if we can provide additional information, we can. But the the, just to summarize, with respect to the easement, as I said, we provided the only information. There's nothing actually at this, in the Richmond County clerk about this easement, and we provided this historical letter. I think it was from the the eighties saying that this is a related to the site grading and we're not proposing any construction in that easement. And it were eight feet away from the easement based on the latest plan, so we're not sure what the DEP concern is. Um, and then with the SCP, when our project engineer, and as I said, we'll submit that letter to the record, maybe that satisfies DEP's. You know, current concern, but the project engineer is saying, this doesn't trigger the need for any new approval. You know, just big picture, what this is, is this is a site that was originally approved. There's an existing trailer and like a shed out there, and basically the contractor who's been there for many years says. I'm tired of the materials I have out there being exposed to the elements and I want to build this four thousand foot. You know, enclosure to protect those elements, and that's really what this is. This is not a, this is not a brand new warehouse, is not a, this is a. A a different type of application, so maybe that's causing some of the confusion.
Yeah, I see. So so your building is eight feet from the easement area?
I believe if you look at the, excuse me, no, it's eight feet from.
Lot line, it's eight feet from the lot line. I don't know how big the area is.
It's a few feet, but but it's, the building's definitely not within the easement, but I understand what you're saying about like the easement, the easement.
Yeah.
As an attorney, that bothers me a little bit to have an easement for an easement, but.
Really?
It's a little unusual, I mean, is that, I would just, I would just draft the easement, you know what I mean, like, but.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
So.
So I I do want to say that um, that it's, it's funny. Because we often comment about these sheds and trailers on sites. And I'm always like, can't you build something to put that stuff in? There you are, building.
There you go.
The stuff in and having difficulty, right?
Okay.
All right, um, Commissioner Sheta's hand is up. Go ahead.
To Mr. Dale, I did, do you hear me?
Yes, sorry.
I did read the response and I I got confused by it. The the way it's it's written, it gives the impression to, and and the reason I felt that way is because I'm engineering. I I believe that my colleague at that DEP is thinking the same way. The way you present in your case is you're saying, or the engineer is saying that since there is no change in the lot size. Or because of the size of the alteration or the addition, it SCP is not needed. Or at, in in short, that we looking at the entire drainage system, including the drywells and this, and this is not needed. I I believe this is for me as an engineer, this is not convincing. I believe the way it should be presented. Is drainage system characteristics dependent on one thing or two things, actually. Number one, how much area you have, how big is the site? And number two, how much impervious areas and to what degree of imperviousness you, you have these areas. If you presented to the DEP, the way I am explaining it right now, look at this, that there is no change in the previousness. Because originally, the entire site was paved or was impervious. And now by adding this addition, we're not changing the area nor the degree of the imperviousness. I believe they would, they would buy that argument, but at, at like the first moment I read lot size, I said, oh, so if, if you have the same lot size, but if, if you consider the same lot you were talking about with like the footprint of the addition previously was dirt, then you have like the area of that addition as pervious. So it's gonna take whatever runoff, send it down, percolate it. But, and, and in this case, if you put an addition, the size of the building is like 30% of the entire lot size. This is a big change to the DEP engineer. But if this area was originally paved, and instead of the pavement, you're just adding a building, then there is no change in the runoff. There is, there is no change in the discharge. You want to put in the drywall, and hence, there is no change needed to the design of the drainage system. I believe it should be presented that way. It might be easier for them to get it. Thank you.
I thank you very much for that. We do have this engineer letter, but reading it, I'm gonna ask them to amend the letter to include your discussion regarding the impervious area, because I don't know if that's necessarily made clear, but I think that will help with this letter. So we'll get that letter submitted and hopefully this will address DEP's concerns.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that recommendation. Yeah, I think that's an idea. And arguably, you even direct from the roof, the roof slope, you're directing water to a drainage system that you can control better than like overflow on a parking lot, on a parking area that doesn't have good drainage, arguably. I don't, I don't really know. Okay, so thank you for that. Let's go to the public. So the case we are currently discussing is 17093A, 220 Industrial Loop Staten Island. Should you wish to call in and discuss, please dial 646-558-8656, enter webinar ID number 99232735415. Press pound. You will press pound at the next prompt. Press star nine to raise your hand, once you're in the Zoom room, I'm sorry. Press star nine to raise your hand, press star six to unmute to be able to speak. And if you are in the Zoom room or ready, please raise your Zoom hand. We are only discussing 1793A, 220 Industrial Loop Staten Island at this moment. Okay, and there's again, this one person in the Zoom room. If you want to speak on this case, please raise your Zoom hand with star nine. Okay. And by the way, we listed all of the cases to be heard today. That's what we started with in the review session. If you didn't hear your case listed today, it means it's on for tomorrow's hearing. Okay. So, okay, um, I would like to say, let's see, how much, let me see, what kind of thing? So the only thing we're waiting for now is really the DEP thing. There was nothing else to submit, right? So what I'd like to ask Tracy to do is reach out. Tracy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thanks. So if you could reach out to your contact, the DEP, and try to set up a call with Mr. Dale, you and the DEP rep about specifically the site connection, what is it called? SCP?
Connection.
Site connection proposal. Site connection plan.
I'll have to ask Tony for the contact, because I don't deal with this department regularly.
I could set it up. We could set it. Yeah, okay, you can set it up. All right. Yes, so ASAP, so that we can, I'm gonna close this, but so we can schedule this for an earlier decision, okay?
Okay.
Okay, great. So then there's nobody calling in and a motion to call, close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Sheta? Oh, you're muted. You're muted. No, it's not muted. Your speaker is off. No, very, very low.
Aye.
Yay. Commissioner Shabeta? Thank you. On this, again, for the record, that that was an aye from Commissioner Shabeta, because we only heard the last half of that syllable. But I heard it. Or maybe, maybe it's being. I heard, yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Dale.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 18, 201870A through 201886A, 201889A, 201890A. This is Santina Drive, Staten Island. Okay. I'm going to admit, Mr. Santina, but really, there, I mean, Mr. Sana. But he's become Mr. Santina. It's like branding. From now on, forevermore, you will be Mr. Santina. So he doesn't need to write this in A case, so he doesn't need to be sworn in. Right. So, so I just want to say again, thank you so much. If you want to unmute yourself, you can unmute yourself, but thank you so much for your hard work, cooperation and coordinating this super complicated location. Yeah, Chase, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to, thank you. I just wanted to also echo those sentiments to the applicant and to the fire department. Thank you so much for everyone's help on this.
Yes. Yes. Thank you so much. Really, Herculean effort. A role model and super complicated because of the site's history and all of the overlapping easements and everything and everything. Yes, and thank you for the Saturday and Sunday emails, conferences, whatever. Yes. So this is the other part of it. Staff work like crazy on this, so I do want to thank especially Tony and Chase for all of their diligence and attention and all those good things that our staff does. So then I would like to make a motion to close this, and then I'd also like to bring this to a vote. Okay, so motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, and then a motion to grant. And to say conditions, it's all the conditions that were in the original resolution. Because we have an actual resolution on this that we're just really updating and reissuing. I certainly am not going to go through them, because it'll, like, it'll just, it'll be days. So thank you very much and to everyone, and a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Bravo. Thank you, Mr. Sana. Yes, thank you. This concludes the public hearing for May 23rd, 2022. Thank you.